Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of March 10, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Just in reporting out from closed session, the committee voted five to nothing to approve the two memoranda of understanding and authorize the chair to sign both agreements. Now I'd ask all of us to join, all of you to join me in a moment of silence as we hope to see the end of this COVID nightmare in the near future. Thank you. I'll recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I understand we may have at least a couple of people who signed up for good and welfare. Mr. Notariani, are they there?
Yes, Chairman. We, it appears we have one, I see one on the screen. I'm looking for the second individual. But Lena Rodriguez is on the screen right now, Chairman.
Did you say Lena is on?
Yes, Chairman.
I guess we have for good and welfare, Ms. Lena Rodriguez. I would ask you to state your name and address and, you know, address the committee, and you've got three minutes. Please.
Okay, so I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Lena Rodriguez and my address is 235A 6th Avenue, 1 Sockit. So, good evening, everyone, and I, I am bringing some topics to you on behalf of the senior class officers and some other fellow seniors. We are really interested in having an in-person, as close to normal graduation as we can, as COVID permits. Some other senior activities that we have thought of is a pep rally at Berry Field, so everyone can be spaced out and things like that. We also, in place of having prom, because we know that prom is kind of a, it's short notice now and things like that, we want to satisfy everyone's desires, so to say, and have a semi-formal and just maybe some other, on the side, other small senior gatherings outdoors. For the pep rally, we're thinking about giving recognition to the sports, having dance and theater present something, and we're thinking of having juniors and seniors, but if both of those two classes is too much, then we can just narrow it down to seniors. But yeah, that's really all that I, all my concerns that I have for tonight. Yeah.
I want to thank you for your comments, and as you know, on our agenda, we've got a discussion of the end-of-year activities, and we'll definitely be addressing your concerns, your officers' concerns, and the classes' concerns, because like you, we are, we really want to have as much in-person exercises and events as possible. So, we're definitely looking forward to that, obviously COVID permitting, but you're right, this is where we would like to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is our, is our second person there, Al? Is Ms. McGovern there?
Chairman, I don't see the name in the list.
See her.
No, Chairman.
I don't think she's there, right? Okay, we'll, we'll continue with recognition and announcements. I guess we don't have any. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the February 24, 2021 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Are there any additions, deletions, alterations to the, to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. At the end of the minutes, there was an item dealing with the middle school grading policy that Dr. McGee and Ms. Ray Alte had, had recommended to the committee. I believe we voted not to go ahead with that grading policy. I thought it was five-zero to, to not go, go ahead with it, but the minutes seem to reflect that we voted five to nothing for something. And I, I think that was, it's confusing, so it should be corrected.
Mrs. Kepiscus, is that your recollection?
Yes, it is, but I'm looking at the minutes, and it reflects roll call vote to adopt policy five no's. So I think that, that's clear, because it also goes on to say not approved, vote failed.
Okay.
So I'm, I, I didn't, I didn't have a problem. I thought it was quite clear, but that was absolutely my recollection as well.
I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I, I had read it five zero, and the word approval was right next to it, so.
No, it's the way it's written. You're right, Vice Chair Burke, you know, to approve, but it's five no's and we did not approve. That's what my thoughts were. Okay? Any other amendments or changes? Dr. McGee, roll call. You're, you're muted, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any committee member want to take any item in the consent agenda out and address any item specifically?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke?
I have a question, a question about the homeschool policy that we have. If someone has signed up for homeschool policy, does that happen this late in the school year? Is that still allowed?
Uh, as far as-
Mrs. Holt can sort of tell us that.
We have had, we have had homeschool requests, as I recall, as late as May.
Okay.
I mean, Mike, I think I'm right about that. We've had them way late into the year, and if they meet the requirements, then they're approved. But yeah, yes, it's still applicable.
Okay.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
I see that Mrs. McGovern can't connect. I don't know if she can connect. If she does, we could have a, we can have a, make a, we could have a motion to allow her in, but at this point, she can't get in. So at this time, I'll ask the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the school committee, I'm going to start with personnel matters. We have recently hired two new full-time employees, one a preschool resource teacher at the Head Start Poltheer campus, and the second is a part-time custodian. This is one of the custodians that the school committee approved for COVID-19 additional, you know, cleanup, and so that's a point four full-time employee here in the district. We also have hired two hourly stipend positions, one being an ESL study pal. Those, the study pals work with our multi-language learners in our districts. And second, we hired a bilingual parent liaison as well. So those are the most update, updated personnel matters. I'm going to skip to the third bullet, and then I'm going to go to the second bullet after that. So the contract negotiations update. Happy to announce that our team here in the red, which is made up of administrators, principals, assistant principals, and directors, met last Friday with Attorney Rappore, and we finalized our proposals. The next step in the process is we have established a meeting, an initial meeting with the Wensocket Teachers' Guild negotiating team on March 18 at 3:30 at the Hamlet Middle School Library, and that meeting is going to be used to discuss the ground rules for the negotiations, as well as the upcoming dates of negotiations. And the second meeting that we scheduled is with our Wensocket Education Department negotiating team. That's for March 25 at 3:30, and at that meeting, we're going to review the proposals that our team has put together with our negotiating team. So I'm happy to announce that. Thirdly, and I want to talk about the school reopening update. I'm very happy to announce that on Friday, over 300 Wensocket Education Department employees will receive the first dose of a Pfizer, the Pfizer vaccine. I want to thank Governor McKee for prioritizing teachers and staff and school department employees. As you may know, his goal was to, has been to provide at least the first shot to as many school department employees across the state as possible by the end of this month. I also want to thank Mayor Baldelli Hunt, and I want to thank Fire Chief Chatra for their support in this process. So as I said, the vaccines are going to be administered to Wensocket Education Department employees who have registered for the vaccine. We had over 200 that registered today in the district, and we have approximately 150 who will be registering tomorrow. The, the timeframe on Friday for Wensocket employees, Wensocket School Department employees is from 12:30 to 4:30. So we're really excited about that. Second item under school and reopening update is for our athletes, our student athletes, beginning on Monday, March 22. We're going to be testing our athletes for COVID using the Binax testing kit. It's going to be provided to our, all of our student athletes every Monday prior to their beginning the week of practices and games. Any students that test positive will, of course, be quarantined. We're going to be starting, as I said, on March 21 with our girls volleyball and our unified volleyball teams. And then on March 29, the following Monday, we're going to start the testing for our middle school athletes, which is coed soccer and boys and girls cross-country. The third item I have under the reopening update is that our Wensocket High School seniors will be offered an opportunity to recover credits that they may have lost during the first semester this year. We have a schedule of courses that are going to be offered to our seniors, and this is just our seniors. We want to make sure that our seniors have every opportunity to graduate this year. So the high school has put together a series of courses that will be offered after school. It will be taught by Wensocket Education Department, primarily Wensocket High School teachers, and it will be provided to our students in five, I'm sorry, four sessions. Each session runs about three weeks. First session runs from March 15 to April 2. The second session runs from April 5 through April 30. Third session runs through, runs from May 3 through May 21, and the fourth session runs from May 24 to June 7. The high school administration had a Google Meet last night with seniors, students, and parents who would fall into this category of needing to retrieve credit from the first semester. The caveat in this is that for a student to qualify for this opportunity, they have to pass the second semester, their second semester courses. So, for example, if a, if a student, you know, failed a, a history course in the first semester, they could make it up, but any other, any, any year-long course that they would be taking, they would have to pass that second semester. So we're excited about that opportunity. In addition to that opportunity for our high school students, we're also offering, at the end of the day, the last period, opportunities for our students to meet with, whether it be in person or virtually, with teachers that they have to try to support, you know, their, their learning and to try to get them into a position where they will be able to be successful and pass their courses. The fourth item I have on the, on this, on the agenda is an anticipated return to school. As you know, we all know, the, the governor has been very supportive, the new governor has been very supportive with respect to providing vaccinations for teachers, staff, and all school department employees across the state. His goal is to, as I said earlier, to provide the first dose to all of those staff who wish to receive it by the end of the month. We, fortunately here in Wensocket, as I said again earlier, we have many staff who are taking advantage of that on Friday. We also have had many staff throughout the district that have taken advantage of, you know, the various vaccines, whether it be the Pfizer, which is the one that's going to be provided on Friday, or the Moderna, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, you know, many staff members have received either the first dose and, and many of, have in fact, received both doses. So I, I believe that we're, we're approaching a point in the, in the school year, when you couple the fact that vaccinations are going to be and have been provided and offered to teachers and staff, along with the fact that the positivity rate in Wensocket has dropped in half. It, it was at one point 21%. It's currently at 11.1%. So I am going to be putting a plan together with my leadership team to present to the school committee on March 24, which would be a return plan to have our students return full in person. There, there are some challenges to that. One challenge, which has yet to, to have been, you know, there, there's yet to be a solution, but I think there's a solution on, that's, that's coming, is transportation. As you may be aware, the, the CDC has, has not come off of their guideline of 50% occupancy on school buses, which is not to exceed 36 passengers. You can, however, have students in the same family, sitting in the same seats. So I anticipate, as, as more districts look to return to a full-in-person model, that the CDC will review their transportation guidelines to make it so that more students can ride the school bus. We, we, there are other, you know, it's, it's not, it's not as easy as just flipping the switch on and saying everyone's coming back, you know, next week, let's say, which they're not coming back next week. But there are a lot of things we have to take into consideration. If you look at the, the number of hybrid students that we have, that's, that's an easy return to school, because those are students who are already coming to school two days a week. So the hybrid students, when they return, they'll just be returning five days a week. Their, their alternating virtual, virtual days will no longer exist, and their alternating hybrid days, you know, in person will no longer exist, because they'll be here. The real challenge that we're going to face are the number of, of parents and who, who wish to have their children go virtual this year. We have approximately 40% of the district is virtual, and that's, you know, K through 12. So the challenge that we're going to face, but I have a great team here that did a, an amazing job of, of putting the, the virtual platform together in the beginning of the year and really throughout the year to try to accommodate as many parents that wanted their child to, to attend school virtually. They'll be working on plans to then establish opportunities for those students who want to remain virtual, because we will provide parents with that opportunity. If they feel as though, you know, it's not safe enough for their children to return, that's fine, but we have to provide those opportunities so that we have virtual teachers who will be teaching those students, but also those teacher, those students that are learning virtually. We have to provide places for them to return to us in a, you know, in a, in a full-in-person model. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of time to, to coordinate that. There are a lot of different layers to, to that onion, so to speak, but I'm confident that my team will be able to, to put that together and that we will accommodate as many parents as we possibly can.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes, Mrs. Costa, please.
May I ask a question?
Hold on. Dr. McGee, are you done? Are you finished?
Yes, that, that was the last part of my report. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Costa.
I just wanted to ask about the return to the in-person. So I know, like, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but Cumberland right now is doing like, um, their seniors right now are returning full-time because they are also having issues with accommodating full-time, and we all know, you know, seniors, it's a very important year for them to return. I'm sorry about the kids in the background, but it's very important for them to return as, you know, because seniors are, you know, it's important year. So I don't know if that's something that could be a part of, like, trying to bring students back in full-time, maybe try to bring the seniors back in full-time first before we bring back other grades, not to single out other grades, like, see, that's how, I know it's like so iffy with those situations, because you're not really sure which way to go with things like that, but I know that right now, you know, Cumberland has their seniors back in person five days a week, and as well as, you know, the IEP students and the freshmen, I believe. So I wasn't sure if that could be a potential idea.
No, that's, that's a great question. You know, what I've been thinking of, you know, we, we've been having conversations, myself and my leadership team, about what this could look like. You know, we, it potentially could look like a, a phased-in approach, you know, like one week, a certain, certain grades return, and then the following week, the rest of the, the grades return. But I, but I can tell you that, you know, our, our seniors would be at the top of that list in terms of returning full-time.
Dr. McGee, I got four areas just to comment and question. You mentioned there's over 300 of our, of our folks, of our adults who will get vaccines on Friday. How many haven't signed up? I mean, do we have an idea of the total, our total adult population? We know some have already gotten their first shot. We know others are scheduled. Now we've got 300 plus. What does that leave?
So that's, that's a great question. I don't have the specific number of, of folks who have not either registered for the vaccine or, or who wish not to receive the vaccine, but I can tell you, by looking at the numbers, we sent out a survey to all of our, our staff on Friday, which asked them a series of three questions. Have you received, you know, so on and so forth. And the vast majority of, of folks who responded in the district have either received the first and/or second shot, or are going to be registering for the, the vaccination, the vaccine on, on Friday. So the best, I would say the vast majority of staff in the district are on pace to receive the shots.
That, because that leads to my second point with the, the returning to in-person, because if you still have a large num, if you, if there's a large number that haven't been vaccinated, that could crimp your, your ability to return, in my opinion.
It, it could. And as you know, we have a, a certain number of staff that are out on ADA. You know, they, they have accommodations. Some of those staff members who are out on ADA have indicated to Ms. Dargan that they, they will return upon receiving, you know, the second dose. And there are some who will not be returning because of their specific medical condition, which, you know, would make it riskier for them to return this year.
So if, if 300 are getting shots Friday, typically the second dose is like a month later? So are you looking to open the schools when, when all these folks have their second? So that'll kill April as far as just looking at the calendar. So are you looking at, for return in April, sometime in April or May?
I, I don't know, not May. It's going to be prior, prior to May, that's for sure. The, the, the medical experts have explained to us that if you look at the, the Pfizer vaccine, and, and so, so once, once a person receives the second and final dose, in, in two weeks, that person, again, based on the, the data and, and the shots that have been given and, and, you know, everything that the medical community has discovered up to now, is that it would take in, in approximately two weeks after that second dose, they would be 95% protected.
So that's going to be sometime in April?
So that would be sometime in April. If you look at the, the Moderna, it's, you're looking, they, they explain that you're looking at three weeks. So from three weeks from that, that second dose, they would be, you know, about 95% protected.
Okay. The third thing is, you mentioned students, where you've got some courses that can help them get over the hump and pass. How many students are we talking about that are in the, in the situation where they're not passing at this point?
Mr. Guio, Assistant Principal from Wensocket High School is here with us, and Mr. Guio is, is the, has been spearheading this at Wensocket High School. So I, if, if it's okay, Mr. Borje, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Guio to give you some numbers.
Sure, that's fine.
Good evening, everyone. So as of right now, we took all of the failure data and cross-referenced it with all of the classes that the students need to pass in order to be eligible to graduate. We currently have approximately 200 seniors that are in danger of not graduating, of which already 50 have registered for the program that begins next week. So the guidance department, as well as administrators, as Dr. McGee said, had a meeting last night. We spent the majority of the day today reaching out to families and parents to encourage more students to register. So the, the good news is, the first session starts Monday, but the more good news is we have several sessions, so we can continue to provide opportunities to kids as they, as they register. So the schedule is flexible enough to make sure that every student that wants the opportunity will get it.
Very good. And the last, and the last thing is transportation. You mentioned CDC guidelines. Is that something that we'll be reaching out to Ride and the governor to see if that can be sped up? Because as the, since he wants students in classes, if there's limitations on the busing, that's really going to really stop us from getting all our students to school, especially keeping a social distancing on buses and all that stuff. So is that, is that part of the plan, or have we started working with the governor's office and Ride?
So the Superintendent's Association, to which I'm a member, we've been communicating with Ride, and we're actually, we actually have a meeting with the governor on Friday. We have a Zoom meet with the governor. So I know that that has been expressed to both Ride and to the governor, and that is something that will be discussed on Friday as well. It's something that all districts are going to experience. You know, we're not, we're not alone. It's the, 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 the guidance is the guidance, is the same guidance for everyone. So it will be something that certainly is going to have to be addressed, because that, that is probably the most important obstacle right now that districts will face.
Do, does any other committee member have any questions, comments for the superintendent on, on his report?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Costa?
Just, I want to go back to like the kids that are in jeopardy of failing and stuff. Now, the days that, right now, that we are in person, is there any kind of, like, after-school, like mentoring or tutoring that we can kind of offer those students to catch up to where they are? Is that, has that been made available to students?
It has. So we, we've been utilizing Title I funds for our elementary students. Teachers are afforded, you know, the, the opportunity of, of, you know, getting, getting the, the stipends to work with students before school, after school. So yes, we, we're providing those opportunities, and same thing at the, at the middle schools as well. schools as well.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
You're on mute.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports. Uh, we'll start with policy. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke.
Do you want me to go, Mr. Burke, or do you want to do it?
Nope, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the Policy Subcommittee met on February 25th at 3:30 in the afternoon. Um, meeting, minute meetings for our last meeting were approved. Uh, the only policy that was before us was the child abuse policy, which we had previously discussed at our prior meeting, and it was revised in accordance with our request. It was revised, um, so as to comply with Rhode Island's law on the standards for reporting suspected abuse, as well as, uh, One Socket Education Department's own practices regarding sus- suspected cases of child abuse. I'll go over this in detail because this policy is before us tonight, so this is my opportunity to explain it to you. The statute, statute treats differently abuse alleged to be perpetrated by caretakers like parents or guardians and abuse perpetrated by One Socket Education Department staff. Our practices did not make such a distinction, and the policy drafted in accordance with Rhode Island law has been revised so as to incorporate our school department's policies, which do more than the statute requires. In the interest of being cautious, as cautious as we can, the policy now mandates the reporting by WED staff to DCYF of any suspected cases of abuse, no matter who the perpetrator is, in accordance with our actual practices. However, the new policy also adds a documentation requirement, that is, any staff making a report is required to keep a record of the call and provide a copy of that record to their building principal. If the suspected perpetrator is a school department employee, the principal is required to report that on to the superintendent. This is the recommended course so that if the suspected abuser is a staff member, the department can also begin its own internal investigation, do what's necessary to keep the child safe, example, remove them from the classroom of their school. The new policy includes definitions lifted from statutes as to what abuse is and neglect, but she's also added it, like she, I mean Carolyn Tibido from our, from, has, um, added a definition for sexual abuse, which is missing from the state statute. Mrs. Codere then questioned, um, Caroline with regard to the meaning of mental injury as used by DCYF, because this is apparently some source of controversy regarding reporting, particularly with regard to reporting chronic truancy. Caroline indicated that the statute does not define this term, although DCYF's own policies do, and using the term, um, causing substantial diminished psychological functioning. Principal Codere stated that she's gotten pushed back from DCYF on chronic truancy reports, saying it is not their issue, quote unquote, even though truancy falls under the category of neglect in their own definition of mental injury. She asked what she should do in those circumstances. Caroline advised that under our policy, chronic truancy would continue to be reported to DCYF so that the school department's fulfilling its reporting requirements and DCYF's own rules and let DCYF decide whether to pursue it under its own screening process. Um, our process in the policy supports reporting anything you might fall within the definitions of abuse, neglect, or sexual abuse, and let DCYF take over from there. She reminded us that under Rhode Island law, there's individual liability for failure to report, but no adverse, adverse consequences for making a good faith report to DCYF. If nothing else, the report would create a record. The policy also includes some internal discipline for school department employees who fail to comply with the policy, not just Rhode Island law, by reporting, uh, suspected abuse and neglect up through, including termination. Mr. Burke asked if we had a template form for reporting as of yet and was told that we do. We also discussed issues around confidentiality in making these reports. Caroline advised that while it's not addressed in this policy, it's addressed in other policies. For example, the student records are addressed in forever and after for student records policy, and in essence, you can take a look at them only on a need-to-know basis. She suggested this should also be addressed at the annual training given by principals to their employees, and the superintendent advised that all employees are trained on how to make these reports. There was a brief discussion as to whether to remove the reporting requirement to the principal and to require an employee to report directly to the superintendent. The super and superintendent and principals present all preferred keeping the principal in the loop because they need to know if an angry parent is on the way to the school if there's a report needed to DCYF. Uh, there'll be two other policies that will be on our next agenda, transportation policy, which needs to be updated regarding its field process, and we're looking to adopt a video surveillance policy as we have no policy, but we have cameras in all but one of our schools. And it's likely we also have a third policy coming up, uh, around issues with regard to, uh, BCI checks this state statute requires national and state, and our policy only requires state. Um, our next meeting was set for March 25th, but that conflicts with the negotiating team. So now that our next meeting has been pushed to April 8th at 4:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any questions, comments for Vice Chair Burke or Mrs. Kepiscus? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a policy update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll ask, um, Mrs. Kepiscus to give us the CLAC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the CLAC met on March 4th at 6:00 PM. Um, introductions were waived as we normally have them, but there were no new attendees at the time. We reminded all that family support group meetings, usually at local restaurants, are suspended as a result of code regulations. Uh, Dr. McGee, as usual, gave us a report as to what's going on with the schools. I won't reiterate, um, everything that I took in notes because it was pretty much in line with what he just said to us. Um, there was concerns expressed about statewide testing. A parent who's also a paraprofessional expressed concern that our students have had no actual prep for the RICAS testing this year, and she's afraid our students might tank the test. Superintendent agreed, that's a great point, and it's frustrating after all the hard work that departments put in last school year to prep everyone for RICAS, but RIDE is clear. All statewide assessments will be given, no exceptions. The MLL learners are already taking their WEADA assessments, and the RICAS, WEADA, and DLMs must all be taken in-person. If someone is a district, a distance learner and they are not coming in to take the test, we are reaching out to them to try to schedule for them to come in, preferably on the Monday, the distance learning day, so there would be less population in the buildings when they come in to test. There is no right to waive the test, but certainly parents can and likely will refuse to bring your students in for the statewide testing. And if they do, there is no question, we will get a zero for that student. So we will definitely be dinged, uh, to the extent that we are not, um, we have students that don't come in. Um, also, uh, Dr. McGee reiterated that One Socket has focused its instruction this year on the power standards, certain key content for each grade level, which may not necessarily align to the RICAS, uh, that they're being tested on. So even in-person students may be struggling because our curriculum may not align perfectly with what the RICAS is designed to test this year. We are not the only district that will not do well in the assessments this year, and RIDE has stated that they will, um, not include the, uh, statewide assessment information in their STAR report card this year, but they insist that we still, they are still requiring everyone to take the test. Uh, Dr. McGee then explained about the intended credit recovery program at the high school that was just explained by both Dr. McGee and Mr. Guo. Um, superintendent explained that there are similar opportunities being offered to struggling students at the middle schools, but it's offered during the day in part due to transportation issues. The elementary schools, it's a bit less of a concern because they're not required to have a particular number of credits in particular subjects to be promoted to the next grade, and they believe that there's more time to make up any work that might have been missed. Um, the superintendent will discuss, also discuss that the high school is looking toward year-end activities. I know that's later on the agenda, so I'll, I'll let that pass now, but we all know we're stuck with CDC guidelines for whatever they are in June, which is two and a half months away, so hopefully it'll have been a different place. Special education director advised that we are making progress at the high school and middle school level in catching up on all IEP meetings, but we're now finding evidence of some students who have been completely truant. That is, they might show up for a day or two here and there, and that is it. Some are not showing up at all. They are sending truant officers out to the homes, but it does not appear to be changing. She's following up with RIDE on how to proceed with this. Assistant Special Ed Director advised that backlog on IEPs at the elementary school is mu, in terms of attendance at IEP meetings is much smaller because those students don't attend IEP meetings, and that most of the evals are caught up with some of the distance learners who are due for their three-year reevals, which in special education you have reevaluations every three years. Families are deferring them, decline to come in, and they'll be trying to make those up next year, assuming things are more normal. A parent asked if educators were offered training as to how to write IEP goals. Dr. Sullivan advised that they do coursework on writing IEPs when they're in school for special education. The district offers workshops at the high school and middle school, but none are mandatory for staff. There are also mentor teachers and LEAs who help teachers who are struggling with goal writing. Um, we just purchased Goalbook, which offers some goals, um, canned goals essentially, and progress reporting. PD is being offered as part on Goalbook each, at each PDA, PDDA offered each month in the district. If any teacher is still clearly consistently having problems with goal writing, she'll meet with them and work with them as well. All of the present were reminded that survey works, the statewide education survey is open until the end of this month. Two parents present complained that there were at most two to three questions addressing special education, uh, where we used to have our own survey. That's a problem that I promised everyone I will raise at the RICAC meeting, the Rhode Island Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, which is tomorrow night. Uh, statewide assessments, the WEADA for MLL is wrapping up. DLMs for our alternate assessments, students are running from the beginning of April to mid-May. PSATs and PSATs, mid-April, uh, through May, but we discussed that by now it's really too late due to requests for accommodations from college boards as they want at least eight weeks' leave time. Um, the RICAS, the ELAs will be March 20th through May 14th. NAF will be April 12th through May 28th. That's for grades three through eight and the next generation science assessment for grades five through eight. All assessments must be given again in-person. A parent asked about opting off for medical reasons, and Dr. Sullivan advised that in her, all her years, she's only able to get one student opted out for medical reasons. Um, student, if a student does not get excused and they simply don't show up again, we get dinged with a zero. There'll be an important presentation at our next CLAC meeting on April 1st, thanks to Mr. Robideau at the high school. There'll be a representative from the Office of Rehabilitation, Rehabilitative Services, which is ORS, um, and BHDDH, or BUDHA, Behavioral Health Developmental Disabilities and Hospitals, on what they'll offer and how to apply. It's critical for our high school students they can line up their necessary adult services. Transition students are all receiving phone calls about the presentation that are inviting them to, to attend, and Ms. Lang has been reaching out to all of the students there. Presentation will begin at 6:30. We'll have a brief business meeting at 6:00 PM. Dr. Sullivan advised she attended a virtual dog therapy session and found it to be fun and engaging, even though it's virtual. There were about 20 students there, and she hoped to stay comfortable with running the program, uh, when we return to in-person classes for now, where we remain virtual. Dr. Sullivan gave kudos to Ms. Dion for hitting the ground running and getting the out-of-district work organized and moving forward. Um, Dr. Sullivan also advised that as the year progressed, it became more evident that our students on the autism spectrum are struggling a lot under our current programs, and we're looking at these programs with an eye towards changes and improvements. Again, the next meeting of the CLAC is on Thursday, April 1st, business meeting at 6:00, presentations from ORS and BUDHA at 6:30. All are welcome to attend. If you want a link, send me an email at either my school committee or my personal email, um, which I can put in the chat, and the meeting adjourned at 6:56 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any member of the school committee have any questions, comments for Mrs. Kepiscus? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a CLAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the health and wellness update. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Costa, do you mind if I start it and you can fill in as needed?
No, you're the pro at this, Mr. Burke. Go right ahead.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Okay. Uh, thank you. Well, the Health and Wellness Subcommittee met this past Monday, March 8th at 12 o'clock in the virtual meeting. Uh, we considered our three main subjects as always. Um, in our discussion of nutrition, um, Ms. Ashley Plant, the Director of Sodexo, explained to us that right now, students who are learning remotely and come to school or come to several areas, um, I think there's four schools, four, four schools, uh, twice a week to pick up food for several days. She has recommended now, a survey has been sent out or will be sent out where she's asking, would people rather come once a week for a week's worth of food rather than coming twice a week? That was important information, and I, I, I think the survey has gone out or it should go out, and, um, just, Dr. McGee, is that correct of the survey?
Uh, I, I, I don't know the specifics of when it will go out, but I can find out, Mr. Burke.
Okay. At least, at least to have parents be aware to keep on the lookout for it. Um, in dealing with physical activity, we also learned from Ms. Corinne Weatherall from Rhode Island's Healthy Schools Coalition, that there is a Recess Rocks Professional Development Training that will be part of the Professional Development Day on March 15th, uh, in the One Socket Education Department. Uh, over the years, many of our teachers, some, many of our PE teachers have obviously been involved already with Recess Rocks, and, um, and I know Ms. Ms. Weatherall, working with, uh, Dr. Holt, has provided this as a, a professional development opportunity. Um, we also heard from, uh, Ms. Gigi DeVello from Project Aware and her, and her committee and her group, and, um, she gave us an overview of the many things going on with Project Aware, dealing with the story of justice, but also she did mention that, and I believe it's correct, that there are some mental health resources on Skyward, and she was offering that information, information to us. Um, finally, uh, Ms. Corinne Weatherall, again, the director, co-director of Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, uh, told us about a program from Blue Cross Blue Shield, working with the American Diabetes Association, called Project Power. And, um, it's offering to students and teachers that'll provide several activities, uh, for them to do, um, either virtually or in class. And I think, um, uh, once again, Dr. McGee, I put you on the spot, uh, she was sending information about that to you, and you were passing that on, or was it some other information?
I, I'm not aware of that, Mr. Burke, but I can inquire about that as well.
Okay. All right. Um, and finally, uh, Ms. Paula Polino from URI, uh, she runs the SNAP Ed Program from URI that deals with educational activities of, of, of dealing with food. Um, and she has, she has been working with, in One Socket Schools for years, and obviously looking forward to next school year when they can be more involved. And I believe, um, our next meeting is not till May. I believe it's May 10th. Let me just double check. We'll hold it down. Our next meeting is May 10th. And, uh, unless you can add something, um, Ms. Mrs. Costa, I think that, that should do it.
You're muted, Amy. Mrs. Costa, you're muted.
I apologize.
No, that's, that's okay.
You didn't miss anything, Mr. Burke. I think you, you hit everything.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that report. Uh, any committee member have any questions, comments for either Vice Chair Burke or Mrs. Costa?
Mr. Chair, it's Lynn.
Yes. Mrs. Kepiscus?
Mr. Burke, I, I heard from a parent who was questioning whether or not there's any chance that the food distribution could happen at a different time of day. Um, maybe if you're going to do three days a week alternating, maybe something could be done after school hours because she indicated she has small children, and in order to pick up the food, she has no choice but to pull her children out of remote learning, to go to the school to pick up their food, because it's available from 11 to 1, I think is what she said. So she's faced with a difficult choice of pulling her kids out to go get the food or not being able to get the food and leaving your children in remote learning. So I, I just bring that to your attention. I don't know if you've heard that before.
Um, I, I have not. Um, but I'm sure she could direct a question to, uh, Mrs. Ms. Plant of Sodexo, and that could also be part of the survey, but maybe that's another way she could comment on, on the pickup of food. So that, that's not a bad idea.
About you, Dr. McGee, can we do something about that? I'm sure she's not a- I'm sure she's not alone.
We can speak with Ms. Plant, and we can, you know, we can see if, if, if it's possible to coordinate other times during the day or, you know, early evening to provide the pickup for the, for our families. We could do, we can definitely have that conversation with her.
That would be great, because I, I can contest that. It, it is a little bit difficult, you know, with work hours and stuff, you know, some parents definitely can't, and they don't have the babysitters to be able to leave their children in remote learning, so it is definitely a challenge. I definitely have to agree with that.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the health and wellness update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We did not have, although it's on our agenda, we did not have a finance committee meeting today, because we're still looking for information regarding time clocks, the time clock systems that we're looking, we're investigating and studying, so that was the main item on our agenda, so we are postponing that meeting to sometime either later this month or early next month, until we get that information. So next, I will go, we'll go into conferences and discussions. I'll ask Mr. Notariani to give us the technology and facilities update, please.
Thank you, Chairman. My remarks will be brief this evening. So attached to the memo is our standard technology facility snapshot and satisfaction reports. As you can see by the reports, that we're still quite busy with the technology department. We have work orders at various states coming in throughout the week, which we're keeping up with. I believe, my last check, we were at 59 open work orders in technology. Bring your attention to the satisfaction report. Green is good, if you can see the color green on your report. Yellow is bad, or not bad, but unsatisfied. There were two unsatisfied customers in the last 30 days, and one was related to the fact that they just didn't like that we, we, there was a particular process they wanted to follow, which doesn't comport to our, our procedures in the district. And the second item was a question about how, whether or not we're going to replace a Chromebook, which we weren't, and they weren't happy about it, with the repair that we were able to do. The report for facilities is the same scenario. We have various work orders in, in different states, and we're marching through those as quickly as possible. In the satisfaction report, all is green, which is good and I'm satisfied with. So whatever responses we get, as long as they're green, I'm happy, and there's, there's nothing really to look into and report. In addition to the work order, and we have 49 open work order facilities. In addition to that, the technology department's been in the, over the last day or two, has been providing support for staff to sign up for the COVID-19 vaccinations, and they've provided support to HR, and HR's been very helpful in assisting us to make sure that we get everyone signed up for their vaccinations on Friday. In addition to that, the technology department's been in the process of delivering new laptops to the building secretary's nurses and school resource officers, and they'll be working forward for the nurse clerks for the next round. Facilities, I already told you, we're approximately 50 work orders. They are short-staffed in the facilities department, because we're backfilling for custodians at the moment, but I expect in the next couple of weeks, we'll be at full staff in both the facilities' custodial areas. Our grounds crew is in the process of prepping Barry Field for school sports. As Mrs. Kepiscus indicated earlier, we're finishing up the camera, security camera installation. We have one building left, which, once it's completed, we'll be able to turn everything on, pending approval of a policy that we'll have in place. We recently ordered medication lock boxes, I believe it was on the agenda this evening with consent agenda, and we'll be installing those in all the nurse offices across the district. And finally, we're still in process, and it's probably going to be for the remainder of the calendar year, to replace all the locks in all the doors within the district, so we have a master key system. So, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Perrier for finding the funding to do all of this. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Mr. Notariani? Then I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the child abuse and neglect policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Thank you for giving us that, that, that overview, Mrs. Kepiscus. I do have one question. When I look at the policy under the mandated reporting, record-keeping requirements, I read in the first, that one short paragraph, "All employees of the department, including but not limited to teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, custodians, food and service workers, and bus drivers are mand, and are mandated reporters." And then all the other paragraphs deal with the word employee. Is, do we have to change the word employee? Because I don't think the food service workers themselves work for us, they work for SEDEXO, and the bus drivers work for Durham, who are engaged by us. So I'm not sure if we have a, a point where we've got to maybe amend the wording for the second passage. I'm in favor of this policy, but I'm just looking at the wording as we're going along. I don't know what you think about that.
I don't know. Caroline or Sarah are on the call, but if, if there's an issue with that, I can certainly raise it with Caroline. I can send her an email tomorrow, but I believe, I'm just, it wasn't an issue that was raised, but looking at it, my thought is that she's defining all employees, even though they're not actual employees, as teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, custodian, food service workers, and bus drivers. I think that's what she's meaning to say. They are all mandated reporters, and frankly, under Rhode Island law, every adult is a mandated reporter to DCYF. So whether we name them or not, they are mandated by state law to report to DCYF if they suspect abuse. I want to go ahead.
And the policy, I would have thought, maybe we would say all mandated reporters, blah, 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 second, other paragraphs, change the term employee to mandated reporters, because we defined that term in the first paragraph. That's my thought. Maybe that's something you can check in for the second par, for the second passage, because I don't want someone who's a bus driver to say, "Well, I'm not an employee. I don't have to be, I don't have to abide by the policy as written." I, I would just want to make sure that that's clear, that's all.
That's fine. They wouldn't be violating our policy, but they would be violating Rhode Island state law, and maybe we couldn't discipline them, and I think that's probably the big difference, but I'll certainly send Caroline an email and raise your concerns tomorrow.
I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Kepiscus, and Vice Chair Burke, or any other member of the committee to have any questions, comments regarding this policy.
I think we kind of beat it, I think we beat it to death, don't you think, Mr. Burke? But, you know, we, we really discussed it in very deep, a lot of detail, so, because we've discussed it over the course of two meetings. I see Sarah is here, maybe she would feel comfortable addressing that employee question? I don't know if you were on the call.
I, I am on the call, and I listened. I, I'm, I think it's a great point, Paul, Chairman Borje. I, I have to look at the statute, but you're right, Lynn, Member Kepiscus, that the mandate is to adults, it's not just to employees. So to the extent that that word is a little confusing, we ought to, we ought to clarify it. And I think I'll, I'll, I'll circle back with Caroline, I made a note as well, just to make sure we're aligning with the policy, but the, the goal is to make sure that everybody who is an adult in the room has the understanding of that obligation. So I can't clarify it right now, but I, I think it's.
No, that's fine. We could do that for second passage.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, Dr. McGee, first passage, roll call vote, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Last item on our agenda is a discussion for the end-of-year events for students. I know we started talking about that. We had a student who actually spoke on good and welfare, and we're all concerned in making sure that, as much as possible, that we do have in-person events. And so I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee, to, and, and I see Mr. Henderson is on as well, but we may have, and I think Mrs. Corder's on, so there may be some end-of-year events that will involve not only the high school, but the elementary schools, the middle schools, and I think we should address that right now and see what, what you're planning at this point.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Borje. So first, I want to thank Lena for her feedback and, and her suggestions earlier, that, that was, it, it's nice to hear from our, our seniors and, and to hear what they're thinking about, and, and to hear what their hopes are as we start to plan for these end-of-year activities. Mr. Chair, it, it, may I read, I, I've been receiving some, some communications from some, from parents with respect to, you know, what are the end-of-year activities going to look like, specifically, you know, the high school? Would you mind if I just read a, a, a brief email that I received?
Yes, please. It's, it's a letter dealing with end-of-year events. So, yes, please.
So it's from Alethea Forzier, 127 Ledgewood Lane in Wood Socket, and she writes, "I'm speaking on behalf of the concerns I have over senior events being canceled. As it is, our senior class already missed their junior prom, which was unavoidable due to the pandemic. A few weeks ago, our bordering states loosened the restrictions for holding events. There are already schools in Rhode Island looking into hosting senior proms and other senior events outside of Rhode Island. I would hate for our students to have to watch our surrounding schools celebrate their seniors with proms, in-person graduations, and other senior events while our seniors are hearing rumors of their prom being canceled. I know these events will have to look different for safety reasons, but there are ways to think outside of the box to host them successfully. As always, I'm willing to volunteer to help be a part of the solution. This is a time-sensitive issue, seeing as how students are going to need time to shop for appropriate attire." So thank you for allowing me to read that, Mr. Chairman. So you're, you're, you're absolutely correct. When we look at end-of-year activities, they're not limited to just Wood Socket High School. So if, if I could, I'm, I'm going to talk about each level and the, of the, the end-of-year events that we typically schedule for them, and then I, I can speak a little bit about some meetings and conversations I've had with administrators discussing.
That's fine. That sounds good to me.
So let me start at the high school and the Career Center. So as, as you're all aware, we have end-of-year proms, we have end-of-year award ceremonies, you know, based on the different departments at the high school. We recognize our National Honor Society and Rhode Island Honor Society graduates, as, as well as the top 10, the valedictorian and the salutatorian. And culminating with the graduation, Wood Socket High School, and also the Wood Socket Area Career and Technical Center, they have their celebration yearly at, at Wright's Farm. The middle school also has end-of-year activities, although not as many as Wood Socket High School and the Career Center. They have their, their eighth-grade dance, which is typically held in May or June, and they also have their eighth-grade team promotion ceremonies. So each of the eighth-grade teams will usually, or they have in the past, conducted their own type of ceremony for, for their students. And at the elementary grades, we have our, the, the two most prominent would be our kindergarten and our fifth-grade promotion ceremonies that are held across the district. So I have had conversations with Mr. Henderson, specific to the high school. I, I've instructed Mr. Henderson to, to assemble a, a subcommittee that will be looking at each of these end-of-year events. The subcommittees will be made of students, parents, as well as Wood Socket High School and Wood Socket Area Career and Technical Center teachers and staff. The same thing will be conducted at the, at the middle school. At the elementary level, will also include parents as we meet with the, the elementary principals. So in, in light of all of this, some districts have started that process of, of planning as to what their end-of-year activities will look like. There, there, we, we have to make sure that we keep in mind, however, the CDC guidance as we approach the end of the school year. Having said that, I know there are some communities that have been talking about, specific to the high school, outdoor and outdoor graduation, but a modified outdoor graduation. You know, there are some, and, and I don't know that there are, are many communities, at least the conversations that I've had with my colleagues, that have finalized anything, but they're certainly, they're certainly planning on options. They're, they're talking about also with respect to the proms, maybe having an outdoor-type prom activity for the students, where they're not indoors, but, you know, they're able to socially distance as, as much as they can outside. As we all know, the, you know, COVID is, is, is much, is spread much less when you're outside, so we certainly have those opportunities and possibilities that we could look into here in Wood Socket. And, and the same thing for the, for the middle school promotion ceremonies, as well as the eighth-grade dance. You know, we, we need to look out, outside the box. This has been a, a horrible year for, for, really for our students, because they, you know, it, it hasn't been a typical year, and much like it was last year at the end of the year, our seniors are suffering really the most, and we need to make sure that we provide them with opportunities that, that as, as, that can resemble normalcy as much as possible, you know, while also maintaining the health and safety of, of our students. So I, I'm, I'm going to be meeting regularly, and I have been meeting with the principals to discuss what these end-of-year activities will look like. Again, I spoke with Mr. Henderson, and I, and I've, you know, instructed Mr. Henderson to provide me with a, a summary of, of what these end-of-year events will look like after he has had an opportunity to, you know, to conduct the, the subcommittees that'll be looking into each of these events. And I'd like to present to the school committee on the 24th, what are, what, what, what the high school and, and the middle school and the elementary schools are proposing, at least for, for now, because we are getting close to the end of the year, and especially the high school is, is the most time-sensitive. The elementary promotion ceremonies are typically not done until, you know, June, late May the, the, the earliest. And the middle school dance is typically held, you know, late May, and the promotion ceremonies are typically held in June. But the high school and the Career Center are, are really the two most critical with respect to, you know, making decisions as to what that could look like now.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Mrs. Costa, I know you, you were on, you wanted to discuss the events. Has Dr. McGee covered what you needed to hear, or is there any, do you have any further comments?
No, he pretty much covered what I wanted to know, you know, about like, you know, proms and maybe exploring an outdoor kind of option or setting, because, you know, like I said before, you know, it is very important for, you know, seniors, and it is a very different year as it was last year at the end of the year, so it is definitely difficult, especially trying to adhere to the CDC guidelines as well. But I definitely think, you know, doing something outdoors, or maybe, I was going to suggest, like, maybe trying to find, like, you know, what middle school may have the biggest outdoor space, and kind of do, like, you know, all middle schools with their kindergarten one day, and then fifth grade maybe another day. I know, like you said, there's going to be subcommittees, so I just wanted to, like, maybe bring up some ideas, or maybe see if there was any suggestions that you had, like, you suggested. So you kind of touched up on everything that I was going to ask.
Thank you. Dr. McGee, one thing I want to, just to remind you and the committee of forming, is what Lena spoke about tonight, is the pep rally. A pep rally at Barry Field that will, you know, recognize the sports, whether in juniors and seniors, in addition to all the events you're talking about, because a pep rally might be interesting, might be able to be done, depending obviously on the, the, the CDC and, you know, where we are with the, with COVID, but I thought that was a pretty good idea. So it's something to consider as you go along in your planning.
That was a great suggestion. And, you know, and Mrs. Costa also suggested. And, you know, and Mrs. Costa also suggesting, you know, potentially using the middle schools for, for an outdoor area, which is large enough, uh, maybe for, you know, our kindergarten and our fifth grade, um, promotion ceremonies. That, that certainly is something that can be considered. Um, I, I just want to, I, I just want to, you know, make sure that, that the community understands. I know there, there are unfortunately a lot of times when rumors fly around and, um, you know, I know that there, there, the rumor is that, you know, there, there may not be certain end of year activities at the high school. And I can tell you that, um, you know, what, what I, what I usually tell people is, is if you have any questions, if you're hearing rumors about things like that, you know, you, if you, if you haven't heard it from me, then, then it's, then it's a rumor. Um, so I just want to make sure that people, uh, understand that, um, nothing has been decided yet. So, you know, if, if, if people are thinking that, that activities and, and events will, will not be, um, you know, be run, albeit in, in some modified fashion, that's not the case.
Right. Any other, uh, committee member have any, uh, comments regarding, uh, end of year, uh, exercise or activities? Thank you very much for that. So we look forward to March 24th to hear, um, you know, what the district is planning for all our, for all our students. And at this time, I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. I see we have 44 who are still part of the meeting. Uh, thank you for joining us. Um, and so, and we'll see you next time. And I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:12 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa.